I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission, April 27th. Sorry, April 27th, 2021 at 6:00 PM meeting. Our first item of business is, Chairman, we do have a quorum and to approve the meeting minutes from the March 30th, 2020 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Cole. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holliday. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Our first item is, is this one still active, Mr. Logan? Item number one.
Uh, no, sir. I believe they're deferring.
Okay. Item number one has deferred. We will be moving on to item number two. Site plan, 108 Armstrong Court requested by SEC. Trailer storage on 2.11 acres, property located at 108 Armstrong Court, tax map 29, parcel 2.18. I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by 191 Charter Place LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm about to get there. Okay. 108 Armstrong, this is a site plan request to build a truck parking lot at 108 Armstrong Court. Um, on the imagery here, you can see Charter Place and Armstrong comes off of Charter Place, and this is I-24, um, running across the top of your screen. Uh, this site is about 2.11 acres and currently it's vacant. Uh, there is, um, a wooded area on the, a couple wooded areas on this lot, uh, but there's no structures, no buildings. Um, you see the zoning map here, dark blue indicates I-2, I-2 zoning, which is industrial zoning. And, uh, the applicant, uh, was here at the workshop and, uh, there were not that many technical items. First, I'll go here in the imagery or the photos. So there's currently gravel on a portion of the lot and, uh, you can see these boulders here, uh, that have been placed there to keep, um, people off the property that are not supposed to use it. So, um, there's a ditch section here and then, uh, looking further in the distance, you can see this tree line. And, uh, when this was taken about three weeks ago, actually it's been longer than that, it's been over a month, um, because this was a deferral. So the trees were starting to leaf, leaf out, um, but you can see they create a natural barrier there between the residential area that lies behind, uh, this site. Uh, this is the current site plan. It's been updated since March and you can see, um, see they're proposing 30 parking spaces here and, um, they're also showing, uh, the circular, uh, the circular lines are the, uh, truck turning movements. So they're showing the radius for the truck turns. Um, they are proposing a fence that's part of their landscape buffer and that's shown on the site plan. And there's also, uh, it's 50-foot landscape buffer is what's required by the city ordinance. Minimum of 50 feet wide between the residential areas and, um, the industrial area. And, um, they have indicated that stream buffer on the plan. And, um, as part of, part of last month's discussion, um, about the landscaping in this area, um, they've submitted the landscape plan that's in your packets. Uh, there weren't many technical items overall on this site and I believe they've taken care of, did engineering have any? Engineering had none. So that's, uh, that's all the technical items for this site. Um, there is a note on the plan that states that it does not lie in any special flood hazard, it does not lie in any special flood hazard area, so it's not in a FEMA zone. Um, that pretty much completes, it's fairly simple as there's no building being constructed and we'll be happy to answer questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Chairman, uh, looking at the notes, uh, we've got the 40-foot entrance, some more buffering, uh, what about the screened fence? Does that get indicated on here or not?
It is indicated in the landscape plans.
Thank you.
It states that there will be a five-foot tall, black, opaque fence.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Do we have like a materials board on that? So I could like see what I'm looking at?
Uh, no, sir. There's no building going on site, just a parking lot for overflow parking. One of our requests was that, rather than typical chain link, we requested black vinyl with opaque fencing. Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that because I was late to that workshop, but you guys took care of that and it's a pet peeve of mine, but I appreciate it. I think it's great.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to confirm, you said it's five feet or six feet for the fence?
I might have misremembered. It is either five or six. Uh, there's a note on the landscape plan indicating height.
Okay. I saw prop, I saw prop six, so that's why I was asking.
Propose six foot.
Very good.
It's six feet.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm, personally, I'm going to say thank you to the engineers and the, uh, the owners with the screening. I know we have a lot of, uh, phone calls from neighbors in this area and a lot of concern about vehicles back in here and being visible, so thank you for that.
Chairman, I can motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve as submitted by Alderman Coats. So we have a second?
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number three. Site plan, High Point 24, Lot 1, requested by Kim Lee Horn. Four buildings totaling 580,638 square feet on 78 acres. Proposed property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 19.14, 20, and 20.03. I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by John M. Burns, High Point 24, City of Laverne, and Crown Castle GT Company LLC. Mr. Logan?
This is a request for site plan approval for High Point 24 and, um, this is the first site plan that's been submitted for this site after the concept plan was approved in March. And, um, this, uh, lot, this is called Lot 1 and Lot 1 comprises about 78 acres and you can see on the screen, the imagery here. So this site does touch I-24 and, um, also touches Blair Road. And it is zoned I-2 that you can see here on the zoning map. All this dark navy blue is, uh, I-2 zoning. And I know we've covered that several times in the past and with the concept plan. So this site plan specifically calls for four new buildings of, um, distribution warehouse space slash industrial space to be built along I-24, uh, and Blair Road. And here's some site photos. And, um, we've, uh, seen these a few times, but this is Blair Road near Portico Place and that's the bridge as you're driving, uh, toward Sam Ridley Parkway, um, toward the curve and then Sam Ridley Parkway. And this is the gated entrance that goes to the cell tower, um, at the higher elevation on the site. And then there's a close-up there. 327 Blair Road was the address originally submitted several months back. But, uh, this is the Smyrna side. Um, it's taken from Laverne, but the apartments you're seeing are in Smyrna and this is the other gated entrance and this is right next to the apartments in Smyrna. And, uh, another view there, um, cedar trees that are existing today between this lot and the apartments. And then this is the curve with the welcome to Smyrna sign again as you're headed toward Sam Ridley. Uh, and you see, of course Blair is, uh, narrow and there'll be some road improvements that come along with, uh, this project that will improve Blair. Uh, this is a phasing plan, so the red portion is not part of the site plan, uh, but we're looking at the outer edge sort of in a horseshoe fashion that goes around the red area, which is part of this site plan. And then you can see the four buildings there as they lead kind of north, northeast toward I-24 and then next to I-24. And then here's, um, the actual site plan, shows the four buildings. And then this is a closer view and Building 100 is the southerly most building and it will be roughly 90 feet beyond the edge of pavement of Blair Road, somewhere in that range, 90 feet. Uh, when this is built out, it's 1.1 million square feet of space and this site plan covers 580,000 square feet of the 1.1 million. So a large chunk of the total space. And then this is a closer view of the driveway intersection with Blair Road. So this shows the turn lanes that will be installed and some of the widening to the curve in Blair Road. Also shows the island, um, there at the end of the private drive and, uh, there's been a lot of discussion over a couple of months with, uh, trucks turning the wrong way. So this design is the same as we saw two weeks ago at the workshop. It's not changed. And then there's another overall shows in the end what all seven buildings will look like. So these are the driveway. This is an extra exhibit. It's also printed out in your packets if you want to look at that. But this is the, again, this was submitted for workshop and again tonight, the applicant submitted these. So this shows the close-up of the, uh, private drive at the intersection of Blair Road and also has the turning movements for the, uh, heavy trucks as, as well as the fire equipment. And just a little bit closer up there, you can see the island and, uh, the turn lanes and this, uh, the diagram on the left is showing that it would not be possible for a large truck to turn right out of this driveway. And I don't believe there were any technical comments. Uh, everything's been taken care of since workshop, so that completes report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just a couple of questions for the applicant if you could just bring up the podium, please, sir.
Please, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Brendan Bowles, 214 Ocean Side Drive, Nashville, Tennessee.
Two just informational questions. Building 700, when it's finished, how much that will be able to be seen from I-24? A couple of citizens asked me that question and I just want to make sure they understand.
We got a graphic prepared for tonight to show, uh, the building 700. So this would be going southbound on I-24. I can bring it up here closer if you want. Southbound on I-24, uh, you know, market rolls in the distance. So this is 700 here and then this would be the phase due buildings in the middle. So, you know, you'll be able to see, uh, the building itself. Obviously there should be some trees that are in the existing right-of-way of the interstate. Excuse me. Um, and we'll have new landscaping that's going in as well up there. So that's one view and then I can show you this other view. Mr. Coats, this is the other, looking the other direction heading back towards, uh, Nashville from.
Very nice.
And you got a third one there. You got to show it to us now.
This is a, um, corner office there at, at 700, showing more of the glass and this whole front there in the corner.
I'm glad you showed us that one because I was a little disappointed with the other two as they look very much like some of our existing warehouses. So, um, the, the 700 didn't look very officey till that one.
Right. Yeah. The corners where you're going to have more of the, more of the pop for the architecture and the, and the glass and then about halfway down, you'll see some more glass, so.
Then my second question is, any tenants that you want, any tenants that are interested in the properties, any ideas yet? I mean, just.
I'll let Mr. Kineski with Panatoni answer that one. I know that's been a, a question that's come up at previous work sessions. I don't know if there's any update, but Jeff can.
Jeff connects the Panatoni Development Company, uh, 35 Music Square East, Nashville. There, there's no update on the marketing. We haven't started marketing this in earnest yet, but we do have a lot of local tenants that, at, at Park 24 that want to expand. So the Cardinals of the world and that, that type of group that have a really big presence here already have, have expressed some interest in, in staying in the city.
Appreciate that. Just everyone asked a question and I'd just like to let everyone know. So with that, Mr. Chairman, with everything being addressed, I appreciate them working with us. It's been a good project to work through and I think we've got everything as we want it and with that, I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
I, I have two questions real quick before we make that motion.
Motion on the table? Go ahead, sir. That's really mine.
Um, the back of the property, um, it's a great illustration. How, from the back of the property to that subdivision, Woodland Hills subdivision, what's the distance in that and do you own that property by chance?
Are you talking about this piece right here?
Yes, that is exactly what I'm talking about.
We do not own that property and I can't quite see the scale on that. It looks like, uh, let me see here. But instead of squinting, I'll look here on this.
We're roughly six or seven hundred feet away from here. Okay. Good. Uh, the second question was, is I know there was some talk in the workshop about signs and this probably doesn't pertain to you as much as it may be a question for the board is, uh, the right turn is a bit concerned for everybody. Is there a weight limit on that road? And if so, if there's not a weight limit on the road, can there one be put on the road in order to keep that from happening?
So that's more of a staff question.
Mr. Leach, please, sir.
Uh, there's no weight limit on the road. Typically weight limits are only placed on a road if there is a structure that would fail. Uh, there's no actual structures on Blair Road. All the drainage is carried by basically RCP pipes, which are definitely below the barry depths that are the minimum requirements usually about one foot. These tend to be somewhere between three and six feet deep. So there's no actual structure that would fail if you overload the roadway. Now trucks will be a little harder on the roadway, but what, uh, Panatoni and Kim Lee Horn have done with their design is try to, it will be a very, 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 very difficult movement to make in a truck to get out, so.
And, and I agree. And thank, thank you for, for commenting on that. I, it was just a question in my mind that, uh, I wanted to know.
And, Mr. Rutledge, we did, uh, show the graphic for the signs on C-200 if you're interested in seeing. We added the directional sign for the Interstate 24 and then we added the graphic for the no trucks turning right. So we got three signs coming down the driveway, then one opposite as they're sitting there making the decision on which way to go.
Very good. I'm happy with it. I was just thinking of something else there as a deterrent.
And just to confirm, uh, Mr. Leach, that's as far as Woodland Hills, there's a, a good ridge that's elevated and up from that.
Yeah, there's probably, and Brendan could probably answer, looking through the plans, but there's probably 25-foot elevation in between that building going up, then another 30 to 40 going back down that hill. So they're going to be very well sheltered from any, I mean, they're going to hear some blasting when they do the construction.
Yeah, this, you know, of course the water, yeah, the water tower sits on a knob itself and we're not disturbing that. So I don't even think these folks would, would be able to see across and over the top of that hill, uh, possibly with no trees, you know, in the fall, they may see a corner or something here, but this is pretty heavily wooded and will remain that. It seems like a tough place to develop, you know, right there.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll second Graham's motion.
We have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
That will move on to our next item. Final plat, High Point 24 requested by Reagan Smith. Five new lots in dedication of right-of-way on 144 acres, property located on Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 19.14, 20, 20.02, 20.03, and 20.05. I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by John M. Burns, High Point 24, City of Laverne, and Crown Castle GT Company LLC. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a final plat request for High Point 24. It's requested by Reagan Smith and, uh, this covers 144 acres of property and, uh, the purpose of the plat is to, uh, get this land ready for industrial development, uh, that you just saw in the previous item. And, uh, when all of this is said and done, there'll be five lots total and, uh, we'll get to that in just a moment, but of course this is the overhead, um, the ortho that shows the site as it is today, that stretches from Blair all the way to the interstate. And you see the rock quarry, there is this dark area here near the middle of the screen. Uh, some people call it the rock quarry site. Uh, to, let's see, moving on to plat, they, this is going to show the final layout of the lot. So you probably remember from the workshop that, uh, Lot 1 is very irregularly shaped and kind of, uh, kind of goes in a horseshoe pattern. Uh, it kind of encompasses this whole middle part and then the middle part will be another lot. And, um, what they've done is allowed, um, the cell tower, uh, that's existing and the water tank that's existing, they've made, um, arrangements for those structures to be on their own lots. So that explains the total number. Uh, nothing's changed since the workshop on this plat and, um, there is a total of about point eight-three acres of right-of-way that will be dedicated to the city and that area is along Blair Road. And everything is in order. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is a procedural note. Since there is a property donation as part of this plat, that'll have to go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman before this plat can be signed off on. But it's to our good. I just want to make everyone aware of that procedurally.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this item?
So procedurally, the proper motion is a favorable recommendation?
Uh, no, it's the, uh, excuse me, the Planning Commission can't approve this. I just, before it can be final approved with, uh, the Planning Commission Secretary signing it and, you know, everyone else signing it, it'll have to go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman to basically accept the donation and all that other fun stuff and I don't think Bruce is looking at me too strangely, so that should be the process.
I don't think we've done that before, so I'm, I'd have to refer to attorney for that on a final plot.
Yeah, I, I would want to look into that first before we said one way or the other.
Okay. My, my general thought being that with right-of-way, it's usually not a question of it, but this is outside right-of-way, so it's more of real property. So my thought would be it would have to go before the Board of Mayor and Alderman, but that's up to the attorney on that one.
Well, regardless of, of the acceptance portion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept as submitted.
Very good.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. We have a second by Mr. Holliday. Motion by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So from my understanding, uh, Mr. Richardson or Mr. Coates, so it will go to Mayor and Alderman. Mayor and Alderman will sign off and then our secretary will sign off on it and everything we're proceeding as accordingly, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Very good. Motion passes. We'll be moving on to the next item. Item number five and item number six have both been deferred. We are moving on to item number seven. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by Romero and Samuel Rodriguez. Approximately 2.5 acres, property located at 1517 New View Street and 1519 New View Street and Humble Drive, tax map 14-0, Group A, parcels 6, 7, and 5.01. Current zoning district, R3, high-density residential zoning district. Proposed zoning district, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by Romero and Samuel Rodriguez. Mr. Logan?
This is a request to rezone property at 1517 and 1519 New View as well as Humble Drive. And, uh, here to four, the Humble Drive location is vacant, so it was never assigned an address. That's why there's no house number or street number listed in your packet or on the agendas. Going to the ortho photography here, there's three lots that you can see outlined in blue. So 1517 and 1519 New View are very long and narrow lots and then the third lot comes in off of Humble Drive. So zooming in, now you can see 1517 and 1519. This is a swimming pool there on 1519. The corner lot is not part of this rezoning, so don't want to confuse anybody. And then the Humble Drive lot is in the rear with just a few trees on it and no structure. Um, move into the zoning map. You can see, uh, the area is zoned R3 in this green color. Again, New View runs east and west and Humble is north and south. Uh, does butt up next to a large area of I-1, which is this light blue, um, area, which includes, uh, Carter lumber and the Kite Home Center is, is immediately north of this site. And these are photos from the street that shows 1517 and 1519 New View. And, uh, you see some of the fences there and this is the driveway at the end of 1519 New View. See the house there? And, um, kind of looking up the property line between the two, um, lots on New View. And then as you round the corner and go up Humble, this is the view that you will see. Uh, you can see a large area of gravel that has been placed, uh, there in the past, I'm not sure how long, but fairly recent. Um, and then, uh, you can see here some of the equipment and, uh, some of the materials that are on the site. A lot of gravel. And then this is a even larger view of the expanse there from Humble Drive. Uh, the name of this business is Amigos Concrete and that's not been mentioned yet, but you'll see this, um, in your packets as they submitted paperwork and then I've got the slides here. Um, so let me just go ahead and go to that. So you can see the Amigos Concrete LLC logo. And then, uh, they submitted this and, uh, these are some of the maps that they put together. Uh, so you can see the Kite Home Center is north of them. That's in that I-1 zoned area. And then, um, taking a closer view of their property, so this is 1517 and 1519 New View and then going up to Humble, you can see the frontage here. So they've got listed 95 feet of frontage on Humble and then they've measured 200 feet back and then this width is about 280. So, um, the only dimension that's missing is in this area and I, I haven't seen a dimension shown for that area, but if you do the math, even without this dimension, you're going to land at between a half acre and three-quarters of an acre, give or take. So, uh, it's important to remember in the zoning ordinance that in this zone that they're requesting, there's no minimum lot size. So a half acre would do it, a three-quarters of an acre would do it. There's no minimum lot size, which is pretty typical in industrial. So, anyway, this was not here at the workshop and we didn't know any dimensions and, but it was determined that you, they cannot live and be rezoned industrial. And, and if you remember at the workshop, they were considering rezoning the entirety of 1517 and 1519, which means they're going to have to move and make other arrangements because they cannot live on industrially zoned land. Um, and I haven't heard any changes to that since, uh, the workshop. So, um, that's kind of summed that part up. I've gone through the photos and this is what they've submitted. So staff will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Um, so, Mr. Logan, so this is, um, this is now subdividing lots, three, three separate lots, creating a fourth lot and then rezoning that. Just want to confirm with Evan or Bruce that, that we can do all of that at one, or make that recommendation all at once. I would think that the subdivide and the rezoning would be two separate items because one's going to go as a recommendation to the to the Board of Mayor and Alderman where the subdivision can be handled here.
That's correct.
And we have some site planning going on as well.
Correct. The, the building, the existing building may be problematic, and the new building may be, depending on what those setbacks are.
If you take a look at the plat that's been supplied, Miracle Heights, Section 3. I infer they're referring to Lots 74, 75, and 76. I would have to see that you'd have to rate those off or get that surveyed and then platted before we could move forward.
Yeah. I kind of feel the same way as well.
So you typically, what, when I've encountered these in the past, it's really a difficult position for the city. Because if you tell them to hire a surveyor and subdivide it, but it hasn't been rezoned, then you're really opening up to some liability. So I, there's really no other way to do it but take their rough estimate of the rezoning and then later apply it to your zoning maps. And then they know they've got the zoning before they spend a lot of money on a surveyor. I mean.
They, they won't know they have the zoning, though, until the Board of Mayor and Alderman decides that part. So even, even this board can't. And I see that slightly problematic for the Board of Mayor and Alderman to not have it situated correctly.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just tack on with Bo. We, there's nothing in our ordinance that requires us to zone the parcel lines. So you can zone based off rough lines. Basically, the exhibit shown. You know, so this board, if they so chose, could, you know, send a favorable or unfavorable based on that usage to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to determine that zoning. And, you know, the Board of Mayor and Alderman, as a prerequisite to attaining that zoning or a prerequisite, however you want to look at it, could basically say, if we give you this zoning, it has to be subdivided. You know, just as, you know, a contingency upon that zoning. So that's one way it could be handled. But that's just an option.
There, there, there might be an issue with respect to notice. Anytime that there's a rezoning, the specific map and parcel, specific property that's going to be rezoned, has to be advertised. Notice has to be given to the public. And so to the extent that there's any discrepancy in what is noticed versus what is actually considered for zoning could, could be problematic for the city.
And I think either way, we need to get the last dimension. We're one-dimensional mission up here to get the dimension set up. Obviously, that's the dimension.
The rear setback.
Yeah.
Their setback's concerning as well.
Would there not be other things that have to be considered, like the gravel surface with the rezoning?
Not with the rezoning.
That would be at site plan.
Same with the building.
Yep. Since we're expressing concerns, I appreciate the concerns in regards to the paperwork. Go ahead, man.
Well, also for them to understand what might be needed to move forward before they go to a lot of expense as well. Make sure they understand the, what would be required of it once that did happen to make the changes they're looking for.
Right.
Chairman, can we bring the applicant up? So just so we can discuss.
Please. Is there a representative here? If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Simona Gomez, 1517, Novia Street, and Laverne.
Samuel Rodriguez, 1517.
Romero Rodriguez, 1517, Novia Street, Laverne.
Thank you very much. And obviously, you see that we have some concerns in regards to the paperwork and everything being done legally and correctly. So that's our, our first step. So I'm going to open the table up to the board. Questions or comments? Well, first comment is, is that we're missing a dimension on the paperwork that you have submitted. The top purple line does not have a measurement on it, nor does the bottom left-hand line.
Yeah, you, you, it's hard to see, but it's a, it's a wood fence across. There is only way to the wood fence.
Right, but it's, the dimensions are missing. And, and we have to be very specific and exact in these situations. I believe at workshop, actually, I'm quite surprised that you're here. I didn't think you'd get it all together. But we're, we're moving forward, and that's the most important thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, sir.
As an aside, I think probably to address Mr. Cope's comment as well as my own to a certain extent, probably to legally define the area to be basically rezoned, they will need a surveyor to basically lay that out and stamp it as the area to be rezoned. So they wouldn't be doing a subdivision. But they would need to have it laid out in an official manner that would be reproducible and that we could add to the map and also advertise legally to satisfy our requirements.
So, so there's still some steps, I feel, that we need to take to, to even get to a voting point at this point. Probably my recommendation would be to defer. Get with staff. Did, did y'all get with staff in this time period?
Yes.
Since the last meeting?
We've had a few meetings.
Okay.
We probably need to have a few more.
Yeah, we probably need to have a couple more meetings. And like Mr. Leach said.
And what Adam's referring to is sometimes called a boundary survey. And it's just, I've seen it a lot on like properties that are 100 years old, and they're just trying to firm up where the iron pins were put in in 1900.
Yes, sir.
Again, I just want you all to know that you're going to have to spend some money. And so i-if it, if it goes this way, and there's no guarantees. So I just don't want to be the person, this needs to be talked about.
Yes. You, you would not be the first customer that's had, had gone, or first applicant that's gone through a process and gotten either favorable or unfavorable. But in order for us to get to that decision, we have to have the proper information. And right now, I'm feeling that we're a little bit light on information. We don't have everything that we legally need to do this correctly. Does that make sense? So my best recommendation.
Well, we, we actually can make the motion here. I, I mean, I, I would make the motion to just defer it. Give them another month to come back before the Planning Commission workshop next month, and we can go from there.
Well, if, if we defer, does it count against their three?
Then they'll rezonate.
Does not, sir? Okay.
So I, I'll make the motion to defer.
So we have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor say.
Discussion.
We have a discussion. Please, Mr. Holliday.
I just want to indicate that I do not see a favorable outcome on this situation based on what is presented before us. I understand that we are considering a deferral motion. But as we're talking to citizens for additional investment and such, from my personal perspective, as a voting member of this board, I'm, I'm challenged to find a, a favorable outcome on, on what, what is being suggested. And in fairness to the potential investment that you may make, I wanted to make that statement clear.
Very good, Mr. Holliday. Thank you. Can I get the gist of that, guys? So we have a motion to defer the item until next month so we can do some more paperwork and discuss it. That's the motion that's on the table. I'm fixing to take a vote.
Okay. Do we need to talk to Mr. Bo about?
Yes, yes.
Make an appointment?
Yes, but I just want to say that there's not a lot new you're going to get from me. I, I'm going to tell you to go hire somebody.
Yes.
That's.
No, that's fine. And we need guidance.
Yes.
I mean, you know.
I'm going to work with you on your application. I'm going to make sure you got.
That's fine.
Y'all did an awesome job. You've done a great job. Way more than, like the chairman said, way more than anybody expected. I just, I don't have any more tools to help you. I'm running out.
We, we, we'll have to refer you to somebody. But we can, we can point you in that direction, and you can pick somebody and go from there. And then bring it back next month before here. And we can go from there with it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will see you at workshop next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very good. With that, we will move on to our next item. Item number eight, Site Plans. Spirit of Life Ministries requested by Azmitec Engineering. Property located at 253 Stones River Road. Tax map 15L, Group B parcel 24. R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Ministerios de Spiritual de Vida. Mr. Logan.
This is the site plan request for the Spirit of Life Ministries on Stones River Road. It's located at 253 Stones River Road. And currently, this property is zoned R1. As you can see here, near the center of this photo, you can see the orange color. So this church was here in May of 2019. And at that time, they did receive site plan approval for a church of 22,100 square feet. And the adjoining parking areas and detention. And not much has happened on the property since May of 19. So we've received this new request for a scaled-down site plan. They've reduced the building by roughly 50%. Currently, they're proposing a building of 10,800 square feet instead of 22,100. Now, going back to the imagery here. So this is about a five-acre lot on Stones River Road. And it's near Mason Circle. And you can see the homes on Mason Circle as well as the homes on Stones River Road. They, they have about, I said five, it's 5.45 acres. They are providing 122 parking spaces in this site plan where only 89 are required. And this particular site is not contained in any overlay district. And the photos here, you see the home that has been painted since May of 19. They've painted the brick and looks, looks a little different than it used to look. And they also, they have a silt fence along Mason Circle that you'll see coming up in a photo. There is existing sidewalk in place along Stones River Road. So that's not an improvement that's part of their site plan. This views from Mason Circle. And you can see the black silt fence that was put up a while ago. And you can also see the rear of their property or the rear of the house and some storage buildings. And this is the site plan that's been updated since the workshop two weeks ago. So this shows, kind of zoom in a little. Here's their building with the 10,800 square feet. And they show parking that would be built all around the new building. And the dumpster pad location is in this northwest corner that we talked about at the workshop two weeks ago. Their main entrance is here on Stones River Road. And I believe that's the only entrance, actually. And they've kept some of the turn lanes and acceleration lanes that were talked about back in May of 2019. They've got that same layout for their main entrance. The existing home does stay on the site, and they plan to use it and have already been using it. And then this is just an open area here in the front of the church and along Stones River Road. And they talked about this sidewalk. They're proposing a sidewalk from the existing house to the parking lot for the new building. And the other sidewalk will be added along Mason Circle as there's no sidewalks currently on Mason. They're only on Stones River Road. There were several engineering comments last month. And I know some of those were addressed. But I'll let Mr. Leach speak to those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Mr. Leach, sir.
Mr. Chairman, all the engineering comments have been addressed. I did request revised drainage calculations, but I did not receive them. However, the previous application had the same-sized pond with more impervious surface. So essentially, they'll be over detaining. So it'll work out.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
I have a question for the applicant as far as what changes with landscaping they've made.
You state your name and address for the record, sir.
Rocky LeBlow, 711 Hickerson Drive, White House, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
The question I asked was as far as what changes in the landscape plan have y'all made since the workshop?
I added a whole mess of trees all the way around the property now. So that it's even way more than what y'all passed the first time.
Mr. Chairman, just by looking at, putting them side by side, I had the one for the workshop. They have increased the length of the tree and bushes on the property. Let's see, where the existing house is now, the first house behind it, it's now gone to the edge of the fence. So it's totally blocked in that. On the bottom-left corner, the grasshut area, they've added, looks like 10 or 12, 14 bushes and three or four trees. And it's now consistent with the rest of it. So I think they've improved it dramatically.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Seconded by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Thank you very much, sir. And thank you all for your hard work.
Congratulations, guys.
Next item. Set bond amount for High Point 24, Lot 1. Tax map 29 parcel 19.1420, 20.02, 20.03, and 20.05. Requested by Kim Lee Horn. Five new lots on 144 acres. I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
This is the request to set the bond amount for the item we saw earlier tonight, High Point 24. Parcels 19, 14, 20, 20.02, 20.03, and 20.05. So the, the request for the bond setting, this comes from Kim Lee Horn. And this is for the five lots just mentioned on the 144 acres. Per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three construction bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency and a stamped estimate provided by the engineer. The three bids are from Austin Construction, Yancey Brothers, and Jones Brothers. The engineer's estimate comes to $828,789 in total.
Very good. Is that a number that staff is happy with?
It is.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'm coming to how close the bids were. I mean, it's, it's, you know, very good. Appreciate the Kim Lee Horn getting the signatures on each quote. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept the bonds as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted by Alderman Cotes.
Our second.
Seconded by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item. I believe it is our bonds and letters of credit update. Mr. Leach.
So just as a general update, obviously, you can tell nothing changed from last month. Carruthers Crossing, I think, is starting to pull their permits now